All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're coming back to order. And the next item on our agenda is the property tax credit for advanced telecommunications systems. And here's Theo Williams to explain what that means.
I assure you, this is much more straightforward and a lot less controversial. With the city spending funds to put in the fiber optic cables, five gigabits, I believe, Mr. Council President, what did you say?
What was it?
The fiber optic cables for the downtown, was it five gigabits?
One gigabit per second.
One gigabit, okay. The mayor, after my discovery of this tax credit, wanted to encourage investment in the downtown so that this, that the product that we're putting in is being properly utilized. This is a fairly straightforward property tax credit that if you make substantial renovations to your property, commercial or residential, that meets state-of-the-art advanced telecommunications systems standards as determined by the Director of Information Technology in accordance with the standard provided, you are entitled to a property tax credit in the amount of 10 percent of the renovations. That number being determined by a third-party appraisal that's paid, the cost of which is borne by the individual making the renovations. It is good for 10 years, as shown in the attachments that Mr. Corddry put together. The language of the state statute made that be a flat 10 percent tax credit, which would have led to an equitable tax credit based on the individual. But if you look at the first three slides that Mr. Corddry attached, by having it a 10 percent tax credit, that is then deducted, you know, the previous years' tax credit deducted from it allows for an equitable return on that investment. Laura Kay, the Business Development Specialist, has said that she is more than willing to administer the grant. She requested that the application be modeled off of the enterprise zone, which was achieved, and the actual administration of the grant, or of the tax credit itself, will be handled by finance, just as they handle the homeowner conversion tax credit, where Connie has a spreadsheet and tells county how much we're charging this year. So that is the explanation.
Thank you. Mr. Garrett, can we ask you to come forward? I've got some-
Told you.
...technical questions. Technologically technical. Mr. Garrett, one of the questions that I have is if this applies to state-of-the-art communications and utility equipment and allowing for that to be, that standard to be applied to accommodating advanced computer and telecommunications systems, can you give us a sense of what those might be?
Sure. The EATIA standard, 568, is basically just a wiring standard. The whole idea is that it's to ensure that the structures being built or renovated have the cabling in place to handle at least 10 years of future technology growth. So in this case, we'd be looking at a minimum, absolute minimum, of category 6E cabling, which would easily handle the one gig connection coming in through the fiber. And then it would run to, you know, a central location so that whoever were rent or purchased the property would have the ability to utilize the fiber. So it's basically just a wiring standard.
So it wouldn't apply to like a router or-
No.
-mobile equipment like that?
That'd be something that the owner, the building owner or leasing, whoever's going to be using the building would bring with them. The infrastructure goes beyond that. It's the ability to handle whatever kind of equipment they want to bring with them. It's the actual backbone of the system, not the hardware being used.
Right. So talk to me about the costs of doing what you just said. What might it cost to-
For the person to do it? Depending on if they have their own, if they're a construction company, it would be very minimal. Category 6 cabling is very, very cheap. I mean, you could run several hundred feet for, you know, under a hundred dollars. It's really inexpensive. I can get you pricing on it if you like, but it all depends on if they're doing in-house, contracting it out. But it's very inexpensive to do.
So let's say it was the improvement plus the labor. I mean, I assume that would be, any costs associated would be applicable to the credit, for the credit, correct?
Right.
So what, I mean, so let's say they don't have their own construction company in-house, and they had to contract that out. I mean, are we talking a couple thousand dollars worth of work?
Well, I mean-
Potential?
Depends, yes. If it's a big building, if there's a lot of cabling needing to be run to a lot of offices, to a lot of rooms, multiple floors, if you're talking, like, the government office building itself, just the city side, we recently redid it, I believe it was someone who had ten or 15,000 to do the entire building several years ago. And that's, that's the labor, the cost of the wiring, the panels to, you know, the tedious work of actually getting the panels and the walls and getting them run in and terminated. So it's, and that's what, basement, first, second, and third floor. So it's, it's not that expensive.
Right. So I'm just trying to, I'm looking at some of the spreadsheets that were included here as samples, and I'm seeing assessment of the property before improvements, I'm seeing like a hundred thousand dollars. And in one case, I'm seeing improvements qualifying for credit, five hundred thousand dollars.
That, that could be fiber optic, that could be, if you want to run actual fiber cable in the buildings as opposed to CAT 6. Fiber is definitely, you're going to get a lot higher transmission and throughput. That's also a heck of a lot more expensive.
So that's what I'm looking for is, what, you know, what's the window potentially that we're talking about? Are we talking about potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars in any downtown building?
If somebody puts in a really, really state-of-the-art system, using just fiber the entire way throughout, in all the offices, which is just, I really couldn't see anybody doing that unless they're, they're doing significant, significant data processing. Because the CAT 6 or CAT 7 cable could handle up to a gig even more per second, which is just, it's, most computers can't even output that much, let alone-
I mean, who might that be? Like, if Google moved their headquarters to Salisbury?
Yeah, if Google moved the offices, Microsoft, any of the big corporations, any, any companies who would do really, really high-end graphic work, where you're talking lots and lots of videos and data being sent around.
Then that's starting to answer my bigger question, or starting to lead to my point, which is this. You know, 10 percent of a qualifying credit, of the improvements qualifying for credit, is in most cases, I think, owing to amount to tens, if not hundreds of dollars. And that's not much of an incentive. I, you know, I feel like typically you would want something that would, you know, create a real incentive. And I think in this case, we're talking about generally low, very low cost. And to me, 100 percent would make more sense. Improvements qualifying for a tax credit at 100 percent of the cost of the improvements makes more sense to me, in this case, than 10 percent. Now, I could see a situation arising where somebody made $500,000 worth of improvement. But I also think that if that happened, we would have Google headquartered in Salisbury. So there's a trade-off there. So I, I think, from what I'm seeing, there's probably value in considering it a greater percentage than 10 percent. Now, I know Mr. Corddry's not with us tonight, so I don't know if we've done the math there. But another question that I have, and maybe Theo, you can answer this, is the, the credit itself. So typically, a credit is taken, actually, Mr. Heath, you can probably weigh in on this too. The credit is taken when a tax credit is offered for a capital improvement. The credit is taken in the year or year following that the equipment is, is purchased or implemented.
Right.
Or it is parceled off over multiple years. Are there tax credits where the full cost of the improvement is applied 10 times over, over 10 years?
I can't think of one I know of.
No, and that's, that's why it was adjusted, because originally, that's exactly what the state language said. And with Mr. Corddry realized that exact point, and as it's written, the actual ordinance is written, it's describing the first scenario, not the second scenario. And as to the 10 percent, Mr. Tillman would have to confirm this, but legally, I think we are restricted 10 percent. We could change the ordinance to eliminate the rollover provision, and then it would be 10 percent each year, which would, over the course of 10 years, lead to 100 percent. But that's a question that Mr. Tillman would have to answer.
Do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, the state, the state law would actually move that credit not to exceed 10 percent of the cost of the qualifying improvements language down under D, so that it would, you would, you would be able to deduct up to 10 percent each year for 10 years.
That's correct.
Okay.
And this was modified to cap it at 10 percent of the total improvements overall.
That's correct. But if you look at Mr. Corddry's attachments, the fourth and fifth one, by having it as the state language reads, that does lead to a disproportionate amount, because someone that would be investing substantially in the property would not recoup that because of, the language reads that it's the greater of the taxes due or the credit itself. So if you invest $500,000 into the property, taxes due over the course of 10 years would not equal $500,000. So it's, it's a balance.
What, I don't want to make it any more complicated, but a thought, just a thought. What about a sliding depending on the amount of the investment? Because that would, that would be a little bit more of an incentive for, I don't know how much. I mean, it, it's really relative, depending on the size of the corporation. But that's another, I did complicate it, didn't I?
Only a little.
Okay.
Actually, I'm still back on Theo's last comment.
Okay.
Can you do that one more time?
Okay. If you look at, there's five attachments that Mr. Corddry had. The last two, four and five, are under a program where you have it over the course of five years, and it's 10 percent of the total credit applied each year, or the taxes otherwise due, the greater of which. So in other words, if you have a tax credit for $50,000, but taxes due are only $2,000, hypothetically, we're not going to give you $48,000 back. So the idea is by having it a 10 percent total that allows for an equitable return on that. But as Councilman, I was going to say Lennox, your last name is Heath, not Lennox.
I think I did jack.
I know. As Councilman Heath pointed out, I'm sure with Mr. Corddry's amazing skills in Excel, he could figure out the point at which it would allow, over the course of the 10 years, a proper amortization of that investment. Okay?
Well, you know, ultimately, I think the concept is great. I think, I wouldn't mind seeing Mr. Corddry work that out for us on paper-
Yeah, I think that'll be good. I agree.
Just so we have the comparison.
Yep.
But I'm, I'm interested in moving this forward. Are there other thoughts?
Yeah.
There were questions before we, okay, so, so let's do this. If we can get council consensus, if we can get council consensus to move it, continue it at our next work session-
Right.
-and get Mr. Corddry to continue to work out some scenarios for us.
Right.
And really also, I guess if he can, if Mr. Corddry and you can work together to get us kind of the likely bandwidth that we're talking about of, you know, the low cost of an improvement to the high-end cost of an improvement, so we can see what that might look like, and then see what it might look like at, at a few thresholds.
Exactly.
I think that would, I think that would be really helpful.
I agree.
But I think we're, I think we're close to there. I mean, again, I think this is, this is a great idea.
Concept is good, great.
Great.
The only last thing I'd like to add is that the wiring standards are the bare minimum that the state allows, the state, I mean, I can't, I can't speak for the legislature itself, but the language of the statute makes it open to some interpretation, because of course, technology is advancing so quickly that I would reckon to say that we could go beyond that, depending on what Mr. Garrett believes.
The, the standards, the standard itself is updated on a regular basis. Every time something new comes out, it gets added to the standard. But, yeah, he's, Theo's made it in such a way that if we opted to, we could put in other, other things that we're looking for.
Yeah, we don't want to create a relic, you know, as soon as we pass the ordinance.
Precisely.
But at the same time, I guess we want to maintain, well, but on both sides of that wall, you know, from the public property to the private property, you're going to want to maintain speed. You know, the private property owner's going to want to increase, or increase or maintain the speeds in the, you know, and of course, we want them to do the same thing.
Right.
I don't, I don't know that we need to get into the weeds in the-
No, no, but just-
-in the legislation.
Just so council understands that this can be applied to other things than wiring, as it says in the statute, like backup electrical services or whatever else, you know.
So long as it's associated with the fixed, with the property, with the improvement-
Yes, yes, and determined-
A property that goes with the property, not with the-
And determined to be state-of-the-art and advanced, according to Mr. Garrett. So I just, even though the rationale behind this is the fiber optic cable that's going into the downtown, in the years to come, I don't want this to be restricted precisely to that.
No, I think that makes sense. Okay, all right. Is there council consensus to continue this at the next work session and to ask from the administration for some additional development from Mr. Corddry? And Mr. Williams, you can probably coordinate that.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I'd like to ask that we also look at what happens with a transfer of property.
That, that is included in the ordinance, I forgot to mention that. There are two other things, I apologize. The only other municipality to adopt this that I can find through a Google search of various terms is Baltimore City, and they actually include a similar provision that just so happened to be, that this will not apply if you are within the enterprise zone, I mean, if you've received a tax credit through the enterprise zone, so that we don't double up. I have left it open to A&E district tax credit. If you would like to restrict it, that if you receive any tax credit, you can. But seeing as the A&E district is so close and dear to council's heart and otherwise, I wanted to leave that open. But you are welcome to restrict that, that they can only receive one or the other. And the second thing, in terms of transfer of property, I do have it that the tax credit will stop if it is transferred, except for certain circumstances as laid out in the, in Maryland statute for transfer taxes, which refers to spouses, relatives, passing through the will to another relative, or from a parent company to a subsidiary.
I think, and I could be only man standing here, but I think I would want it to be able to transfer. I mean, and the reason being is, yes, one person made the investment, and, you know, someone purchasing the property would benefit from the credit. And the incentive for local government to end a credit at that time is to, just at that time, get more money, get more revenue. But it makes sense to me to say that it would continue, so that it continues as an incentive to investment in the core of the city, to say, you know, buy this building, it also has a tax credit, because we put the fastest, you know, fiber optic who's he wants it in the-
I believe that's the term, who's he wants it.
Can we work that into the ordinance?
Who's he wants it, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's up for council.
That's the argument that I would see.
Yeah.
Is there a, okay, Mr. Heath?
No, I'm just saying that I don't disagree with it, but I think it depends on the business that comes in. And I would say could be reestablished at the time of the sale, and reapply.
Reestablished at the time of the sale?
Yeah, I like that.
Or transfer. Just to, because you don't know. I mean, we can't, you know, we have any crystal balls. I just, I want to give us a-
What would be the, what would be the reason that you would want the credit to end at the time of a transfer?
Things are booming and they're dying to get in here.
Okay. Hey, I like your optimism. I do.
That's the only reason I would say, you know, if you, if, it's an incentive.
I like your optimism.
The rationale behind that was so that the tax credit wouldn't be used as part of the negotiating process of the sale.
I like that, too.
But Mr. Garrett suggested that, and this is something Mr. Tillman would have to figure out, is if the organization has substantially the same type of usage of the infrastructure, they're going to continue. You know, if it's just going from one IT professional to another, but legally, I don't know how you word that.
I don't either. But, but I'll tell you what, between now and two weeks from now, the next work session, why don't we attempt to find a solution to the issue of the transfer? You know, a logical solution to the issue of the transfer, and, you know, a logical or a group of alternatives to how we'll handle the, the application of that percentage that, the improvements that qualify for credit.
I agree.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good job.
Next item on our agenda is the Malone College Avenue and Snow Hill Road annexation. I'll ask Mr. Holland and Mr. Jakubiak to come forward. Thomas? Apologies that we are behind schedule.
Good evening.
I'm sorry we're keeping you from your thing.
Getting back before you this evening is a Malone annexation, which began the introduction, I believe it was back in March of this year. It also went to the city-county planning zoning commission in May to give a favorable recommendation to the council to be rezoned as general commercial. This evening, Mr. Jakubiak's here to discuss the annexation plan and annexation agreement for that parcel of land.
Thanks. So the Malone annexation is 2.71 acres. It's at the intersection of College Avenue, East College Avenue and Snow Hill Road in the northwest quadrant. Its proposed use is commercial. The city's comprehensive plan contains this property within the municipal growth boundary, so annexation is consistent with the comprehensive plan, or the comprehensive plan anticipates that this property would be annexed at some point. The zoning is consistent with the proposed land use. And the developer has proposed a concept plan for the site's development that would include two commercial buildings, and has labeled them a restaurant and a retail mixed office building. The project would involve a series of pedestrian improvements around the perimeter of the site. And if you know the area, there are quite a few pedestrians that cross Snow Hill Road in this neighborhood, mostly students, interestingly enough. So the, the project would have some ancillary benefits to folks who walk and cross the various intersections there. The, what is before you tonight is the annexation plan, which is a state-required document that must accompany any annexation. And that lays out descriptions of the potential impacts of the project on municipal facilities, and talks a little bit about how the, the project would fit into the city's bigger development plan, or its comprehensive plan. And is also attached is the annexation agreement. And the annexation agreement is the contract between the city and the owners. It says essentially, the city agrees to annex this property conditioned on a series of agreements. And the, they're enshrined in this document. So this document would be, if accepted by the city council and the owner, would be executed at the time of annexation, become legally binding. The annexation provides that the applicant build a project, much like the plan that he has submitted, that the property be zoned, commercial, general commercial zoning, that it, that the applicant pay a fee to the city of $13,000 for each lot that's being developed, and that fee be payable at the time that a building permit is issued. And those fees are used by the city then to reinvest in other parts of the city, or quite candidly, right there in the neighborhood, to do other projects of, that have merit, such as other sidewalk improvements, infrastructure, et cetera. The, the project also contains, the annexation agreement also contains recommendations about some design elements, that there be a buffer retained separating this commercial site from the adjoining residentially zoned properties, and that that buffer remain in a forest. It's not a thick forest, but it's an evergreen tree area. And lastly, that the applicant address LEED standards, Leadership in Environmental Design and Energy Performance standards. And that is a, has become, to some extent, a boilerplate part of this city's annexation agreement. So that new development actually come pretty close to meeting those standards. Any questions?
Did you say it's going to meet the LEED standards?
It can't quite meet the LEED standards because of its location, and it's somewhat removed from a high-density transit-oriented area.
Okay.
But once we subtract those standards that it simply can't meet, then it will meet, to extent possible, the LEED standards, which is a pretty innovative approach that we've come up with over the years, yes.
I think, if I can recall back to my time on the planning commission, you know, our hope was, and I'm sure it still is, it obviously continues to be something that you use, but, you know, our hope was that the, the principles of connectivity and the principles of, you know, mixing use as one possible in density, you know, there's basic principles of better urbanism than we have, and Salisbury's not unique in that sense, obviously, would, would get us closer and closer to a better product. And, you know, so although we can't meet those standards, generally speaking, and a lot of that does have to do with things that are happening off-site, LEED for Neighborhood Development gives us a pretty good baseline to work from.
Exactly. Couldn't agree with you more.
Good, solid metrics, set of metrics to work from.
Yes, well put.
I think, I have no questions at this, you know, at this stage. I mean, every time we've heard about this, I think, you know, I've been very comfortable with what you propose. Other questions?
I'm good, too, but I would like to talk about, really just very briefly, about future annexations with development there. And I would like the developers to look at and perhaps start to embrace SEPTAD standards, it's Community Policing Through Environmental Design. And those are going to be very important, and I think that the chief is out here, and she's a, she's an advocate as well. We can cut our crime a little bit by, by design standards of properties, and I hope that the developers can get on board with it.
I think that's a wonderful idea. I really do, and I'm very familiar with that, too. And that has actually been a subject discussion over the year with some developers, dating back about seven or eight years ago. But for some reason, we probably have just forgotten about that.
And they're not expensive, they're just-
It's a different way of doing things, making sure you do things right with lighting and positioning and-
Exactly.
Absolutely. Great idea. If the council were to, well, the next step in this process, if you felt like you had consensus here, would be to set this up for a city council meeting, at which time we'd have the annexation resolution teed up, and that would be a, a meeting for you to take action, to set the public hearing date.
Right. Mr. Stevenson?
October 26.
We've got that, identified, October 26. Okay. Is there council consensus of this time to move the Malone annexation to legislative session?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. Thank you both.
You know, before then.
All right. Our next item on our agenda is accepting grant funds for protective vests for police officers. Chief Duncan?
Evening.
Evening, Chief.
Floor is yours.
Thank you. I won't take much time at all. I'm before you this evening to have, have you all accept federal grant funds in the amount of $21,049.03 awarded through the Department of Justice Bulletproof Vests Partnership Program for the protective of, for the purchase of protective vests for police officers.
We have a sense of how many vests that gets us typically?
Well, this is a match.
Oh, it's a match, okay.
It is. And what we try to do is, we, we purchase vests on a rotating basis. Of course, we get funding from both state and federal entities for this program. State is, the state funding that we receive is for new hires. Federal funding is for replacement vests. And we have them all scheduled out on a five-year rotation, which essentially matches the manufacturer's estimated lifespan of the vest. And it really relates to how many police officers we're hiring in a particular year, so it can vary. But we're all scheduled out, actually through FY18, on the cycle for our vest purchases.
Do we get this grant, or have we received this grant on a regular basis in the past?
Yes. Actually, the Fed grant, we can apply for that every two years, and that money can be spent within the two-to-two-year period in which you receive it. The state grant is every other year, and it must be spent within the year in which we are awarded that funding. And that money can be spent within the two-year period in which you receive it. The state grant is every other year and it must be spent within the year in which we are awarded that funding.
So do we have this cycling then?
We do.
Basically every other, we're receiving one grant?
Correct.
Okay.
And they're on a fiscal year program as opposed to calendar?
I believe that the state is absolutely on the fiscal year and I'm not sure of the federal program.
So our match then, because we're not using state dollars to match the federal dollars if they're in opposing years, but so our match is a local match?
That's correct. That's correct. In fact, this funding actually goes right into a grant line and we keep our local funding separate on a completely separate line.
Excellent. Other questions? Consensus to move this to legislative session?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, next item on our agenda is revisions to 15.24.270, Building Housing Official. Ms. Phillips, evening.
I am before you tonight to discuss 1524 housing standards. During an enforcement project, we were reviewing this chapter specifically, 1524 to 80, unsafe structures and equipment. And it was found that several areas within that chapter referred to the building official instead of the housing official. And as we got reviewing further into that code, we found more sections. So there's actually, one, if you look on the line items, 34, 52, 59, 66, 59, 84, 89, 99, 108. And on line 113, it actually incorrectly referred to the Boca Mechanical Code and the current code is the National Fuel Gas Code.
Okay.
And those are proposed changes. And that will bring that section current. Because currently, there was one section that I was having to forward to bill as the building official to enforce, so that will streamline enforcement that can just stay in-house at NSCC.
Understood. Okay, makes sense to me. Are there any comments or questions? All right, hearing known, is there consensus to move this to legislative session?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. And are you going to stick around for the next one?
I am going to present the next one.
Okay, next item is the changes to the false alarm billing ordinance that was passed not long ago, or section that was passed not long ago. And to be very clear, this is a relatively minor change, not a significant change, in my opinion. So.
Very minor change.
That's all I'll say, Ms. Phillips.
And I'll just make it very brief for you. The fire, police and finance departments have all collaborated to develop a process that'll allow the city to enforce provisions of the false alarm ordinance. So basically what happens is the fire and the police all send it to the finance office. Once the finance office, once they have reached the five, I'm sorry, the six or more occurrences is when a municipal infraction is issued. My department, the NSCC, has already developed the whole summon service and report process and it's very streamlined, we have a monthly court docket. I offered, rather than the finance office, to have to start that with entity within their department, that I would absorb those citations because there's not that many anyway. It's an undertaking for them to have to do it, for them to start that. So the only thing that would have to happen is, within the ordinance, it would just have to give permission to the housing official to write the citations or their designate. And that's all that there is, that small change in there. And then it also has the change in here, also that NSCC will prepare and send bills. So at the same time, when we write the citations, we will also send a bill for the billing and that's all the change.
Is this done all electronically?
Electronically, through Munis.
Great. Okay, great.
Except for the Munis infraction. The Munis are factored handwritten and then electronically, yes. But finance does know the day that we send the citation because it does immediately go to finance. They see it on their end the same day that we issue it.
Thank you, Susan, other questions? Mr. Tillman?
Just as a matter of making sure we're using the proper form or whatever, I noticed in this ordinance where we refer to housing official, it's capitalized. In the prior ordinance, it was never capitalized and we just changed it from building to housing. What's the preference?
I think you capitalize housing official.
It should be.
Okay, so we'll make sure that that gets capitalized.
And at some point, and I know we've talked about this before, at some point, you know, I'd like to make it a project of, Tom's going to kill me.
No, no, we're still trying to get to the.
No, you have higher priorities, but at some point I do think, you know, finding whatever the standard is going to be and having consistent capitalization throughout.
So, but where we refer to housing official, it should be capitalized.
And that is in no way an indictment of, you know, of you. I know you, that's a priority for you as well, but, you know, I can understand why you wouldn't spend time doing that right now.
We'll get there.
Okay, is there consensus to move that to legislative session?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, Public Works robot replacement, oh, thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Susan.
Oh, and we are only now 16 minutes behind schedule.
I feel so bad, we jumped over the next one.
Good evening.
All right, Public Works, of course we have the city surveyors in Department of Public Works and we are in need of a budget amendment to replace our survey equipment, our robot. When you think of robot, it's a walking, talking kind of thing. The fact that with the old days when you have the guy standing behind the survey telescope and you know the guy holding the rod. These days what we can do is have a single mate where the guy holds a rod and the robot is the station that looks for it and collects all the data. So what we're talking about replacing is this expensive piece of equipment that's there. Survey 10 years old, so the technology has passed on. If you think of 10 years ago, what your phone looked like, your cell phone looked like and what it looks like now, things have moved on. So we need to replace it, provided the cost that came along with it, we're looking at $28,994 for replacement of the unit. It got damaged out in the field and with its obsolescence, it's not repairable. We have a insurance, we'll have a $10,000 deductible. So what we have to do is do the budget amendment in order to purchase the equipment in whole and then we'll do a second budget amendment to bring back the insurance payments.
So ultimately, out of surplus, it'll be $10,000. Questions? Questions, comments, thoughts, philosophical debates?
I think I'm philosophical doubt.
So at this point, you have a $30,000 hood ornament from the old one, pretty much, yeah.
Yeah, I understand, I think it makes sense and I can see how this would happen. I think as, you know, in the future, we're going to want to see, you know, the walking, talking robots out there doing this for us. No, for the time being, this makes sense, Mike.
It's unfortunate, can't live without it.
No.
I would describe this for the record as an emergency.
Yes.
See, I knew you had it. There it is.
I'm consistent.
With that, is there consensus to move this item to legislative session?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. And is there anything to the good of the order, any final comments? With that, we are adjourned.